And we're live.
Okay. Thank you very much, Rachel, and good evening, everybody. Welcome you to the Town of Oxford Rescheduled Committee of the Whole Meeting. So I'm going to call our meeting to order. I'm just going to give you a reminder before we proceed any further, and that is, if you wouldn't mind, just if you're not speaking, to have your volume muted, and then when you would like to speak, just put your hand up like that on mute, and that way we don't get any background sounds, just like that. And I won't be answering it. So we have. Just wait, that's going to click in. We have the agenda for us, and I do need the agenda before we proceed. Okay. Mayor Draper, Senator Tate Clark, all in favor? Contrary, my. Moved into our agenda. This being the month of June, and being a very strange month that it's been, we have a group of graduates that will be graduating from the Oxford Regional Education Centre, and with this time as the mayor of the community, to send my most congratulations to this group of kids that we are so proud of. I'm so thrilled to see all the banners up along our main street, celebrating them and their achievements. And I just wanted to say that I do wish them all the very best as they step into the next chapter of their lives and make us Oxford proud. So with that, I'm just going to give maybe any other councillor opportunity to say anything that they would like to say before we move on to our meeting. Councillor Edgell.
Hi, I just want to congratulate the grads in 16 years. This will be the first graduation that I've missed since I come on council. It's kind of depressing that we're not going to get to see them. And out of the class, there's four kids that are very dear to us that I want to mention their names because they came to our house probably since they were in diapers almost, and duly looked after them, and it's Elliot McNutt, Paige Oical, Brianne Warwick, and Katie Baker. They were kind of Jube's tribe, and I want to really congratulate them along with all the other kids that went to Oxford.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Deputy Mayor Draper?
Yes, just wanted to send my congratulations out to all the grads. I know it's going to be a difficult year, not having a graduation ceremony, and most importantly, not having that hall later that we all have with our graduation. But it's a special time, and you'll remember this probably better than most of us remember our graduations. But best, remember, you can do it. You can be better than you even think you can be, so good luck.
Okay. Councillor Thompson?
I just wanted to say congrats to all the 2020 graduates for reaching such an important milestone in your life. All the best to each and every one of you as you take your next step forward.
Thank you. Okay. Sweet.
I wanted to say congratulations to all the graduates as well, and I really enjoyed seeing the banners around the town. They are awesome, and what a great way to celebrate them.
Great, thank you. Okay. All right, we're going to move forward now. We need to do the approval of the previous minutes. We actually have two to approve. The first one would be under 3.1, and that's a regular party of the whole, which was May 5, 2020. If there are no permissions, we need a motion to accept those minutes, please. Councillor Clark, Secretary of the Council, Thompson, all in favor? Motion passed. Next, we had a 3.2. A special video, the whole may move on to the fourth. Also need a motion to accept those minutes, please. Move by getting her favors, and by councillor Jade, on favor. Contrary, my. Okay. So as we move into number four under our new business, we will be preparing for the election, which will be true. Yes?
Sorry, you're just breaking up a little bit, so you might want to make sure that you're close to your speaker.
Okay, sorry, I've had this problem before. We're going to be preparing for our election, which will be happening, I do believe, on October 18, with that, we have a guest here tonight, Mr. James, who appeals from he's going to give us a presentation tonight on the the telephone alternative voting software. So it's nice to see you, and we look for this presentation.
Can everyone see that screen? Nope. Sorry, try that. Okay, well, thanks very much for the opportunity to chat tonight with your council. I do know we've been having some discussions with, certainly with Linda in terms of organizing this. So what I'd like to do tonight is be able to give you a little perspective on electronic voting. Currently, Nova Scotia and Ontario have Municipal Elections Act that allow for electronic voting. That's internet and telephone voting. It's very important that everybody understands that electronic voting, as it happens in Nova Scotia, has currently been used by about a little over 600,000 people in the last 2016 election, primarily in the 2021 municipalities that use the software, use the system back in 2016. So tonight, what I wanted to do is give you a little perspective on a televote where we've done this before. Why don't people vote in elections? Why don't eligible electors actually cast a vote? And some reasons why you should be considering perhaps an opportunity to look at electronic voting. I'm going to give you a very short perspective on how to vote online and some of the modules that are included. There's a lot of stakeholders in the election, not the least of which are the election officials and candidates that are running in the election. In televotes, been around Nova Scotia, we're based in Dartmouth, and we are actually considered one of the world's leaders for a small Nova Scotia company. We've got quite a good reputation, we're very proud of that, and we provide more electronic voting in Canada at the municipal level than anybody else. We are the only company that has federal government of Canada federal security clearance for our people and our operation in our system, and we're widely considered to be subject matter experts on this. There's a lot of issues, legislative issues, procedures that people go through when they switch from, say, paper voting or use electronic voting in addition to paper voting, which some municipalities continue to do. But one of the things that is interesting is that Canadians in and of themselves are very receptive. If you look at the, you look at kind of the basics of what we do, we just provide an integration to traditional polling station voting as well as electronic voting. People can vote using their phones, they can vote using their smartphones, they can use their tablets, they can use any internet-enabled device and actually connect into the system and be able to cast a ballot for the candidate of their choice during the elections. We've done lots of elections, there's about 85% of our business is in unions and associations, and the municipal elections here we've done in Nova Scotia, we started back in 2008 doing elections in Nova Scotia with four municipalities, including Halifax. And in 2012 and 2016, we continued to do elections. About 65% of all the eligible electors lived in a municipality that used electronic voting. Currently, we're on track to, out of the 50 municipal municipalities that are looking and or have signed already to use electronic voting, we've got about 42 online already that are willing to use it. So that's almost 85% of the entire province will be eligible to use electronic voting. And those will range in timelines between seven and 13 days, when most municipalities decide they're going to allow their electors to vote over an extended period of times. Some of them, like HRM, also are offering paper voting as long as the COVID-19 doesn't have a resurgence later this year, which is, it's a possibility. Hopefully not highly probable, but it is a possibility. As I mentioned, we do a lot of elections with unions and associations that we've been very fortunate to be on the upside end of COVID-19. If you can say that there is an upside to it, in that a lot of municipalities, governments, and unions and associations aren't able to have their people go out and actually cast paper ballots in their various elections, so they are opting for electronic voting. So a lot of them are becoming diehard users now. We have Public Service Alliance of Canada, where I think over the last five or six weeks, I think we've done 12 elections for each one of their locals around Canada. And last but not least, Ontario, which started doing electronic voting back in 1996, actually, it was eligible there using telephone voting. But we've done more elections in Ontario than any other company as well. So in the small Nova Scotia company, we're very happy to be having a leadership role. Speaking of leaderships, we actually have done 15 leadership elections in Nova Scotia as well. The last one, last one we did here in Nova Scotia was Tim Houston was elected the leader of the PC Party. Prior to that, we've done elections pretty much in every province in Canada. And in the next couple of weeks, we'll be doing another one in Newfoundland and Labrador, where Dwight Ball, Ball, the current premier stepping down, and there's going to be a leadership election there. One of the most interesting things that we've seen when we're talking about electronic voting is when you start dissecting who votes and who doesn't vote in elections, it's really kind of interesting. In the 2019 federal election, there was over nine million people who did not vote. So Stats Canada and Elections Canada got together and they decided to poll those people that didn't cast a ballot in the election and ask a series of questions, and one of them was basically, why didn't you vote? Not surprising, some of them just weren't interested, or they didn't like candidates. If you look at the various different levels, one of the most interesting thing that comes out of this type of study is convenience is an issue for a lot of people. A lot of people suggest that, well, you should be able to get off your butt and go down and vote, it's important. Well, there's lots of reasons why people just can't do that. The most obvious one that comes to mind is that people are too busy. They're at work, they're at school, or they have a conflict somehow, they can't get to the polls and sign, especially if there's a very short or only a single day of voting, along with perhaps some advanced polling that takes place. If you want to figure out and say, well, who does that really, who does that really matter to? The biggest misconception about electronic voting is that older voters won't like electronic voting. When in actual fact, it is completely the opposite. Electronic voting is adopted more readily by older voters, almost four times as much as the 18 to 30-year-olds. 18- to 30-year-olds, if they're not interested in politics or they're not interested in voting, they simply won't do it. So if you look at the bottom part of this chart, and it talks about the level of disinterest, if you want to think of it that way. Older voters tend to be more interested. But if you look at the top chart, those that have problems, they're busy their way, they're ill, or they're infirmed, or they can't get out to the polls, it's the most significant aspect of why they don't vote. And we've seen it in virtually every election we've done at the municipal level, where older voters come out and vote a lot more. Because the information that we get from elections in Nova Scotia and that the municipality gets actually defines the age of the voter, for legal reasons, you have to be obviously 18 years of age and older. What we can do after the election is we give them the demographic profile of who voted, and everybody is usually astounded by the percentage of people over the age of 65 that actually cast a ballot. And that's one of the things that you will see in electronic voting everywhere in Nova Scotia, and that's older voters. They, if they don't have an internet-enabled device, they simply use their phone. Almost 20% in some municipalities on older voters over 65 actually connect on the phone. There's some real interesting statistics as well, out about the number of seniors who are going online. My mom's 94 years old now, she has no idea how the internet works, she's got an iPad, and she can send me 100 pictures of cats doing all kinds of things on her iPad, and she has no idea how the internet works. So basically, older voters are finding that the tools for social networking, to be able to connect to people, they're easy to use, and it's easy to use and touch something on the screen and actually connect to the voting system, and then touch next to a candidate's name and mark a ballot. Reasons that we've included, say, why municipalities and unions and associations, and everybody's starting to look at electronic voting. There are some people, as I mentioned, that are traveling and they're military, they're snowbirds. Students now have, based on Nova Scotia's legislation change back in 2016, are allowed to be at university in a particular time and actually sign up and be able to vote locally. So that's one of the things that has changed over the while here in Halifax, for example, and HRM is quite an issue with the number of universities we have. The results are immediate and auditable. One of the things that the system had is the requirement for an auditor to cast audit ballots during the course of the event so that they can see that the vote continues to function properly, and that's a requirement for our clients to bring somebody on board to do that. We do all the training and everything like that. The voter intent is clear, there's no such thing as spoiled ballot. Having said that, almost every municipality that we work with, there is an option to turn on a feature that allows a voter to be able to spoil the ballot. And spoiling the ballot is pretty much a constitutional right that people have to be able to say, I'm not going to vote for any of you, but by God, I'm going to vote, and they'll purposely spoil their ballot. So you can't accidentally spoil your ballot. If you actually see the list of candidates on the screen and just hit submit my ballot, and you don't mark a candidate, the system comes up and says, you haven't marked anybody, you haven't marked the ballot. Is this your intent? If you say yes to this, then your ballot will be deemed spoiled. Is this your intent? And if you say yes, I want to spoil my ballot, then basically, your ballot is put into the ballot box and considered a spoiled ballot. We do have that happen in virtually every election, people do that. They don't like any of the candidates, their choice is, I'm going to spoil it, they may not want to vote the mayoralty race, they might want to just vote the councillor race or something like that. The impact on voter participation has always been something that we hear. Some people say, oh, well, that doesn't increase voter participation. And I can tell you that there's a lot of factors that influence voter turnout. If you advertise and you make sure people know that there's information going to be coming to them in the form of a letter that allow them to vote, they're waiting for it. The poster child for doing a great job of this is the Town of Churro. Town of Churro had a 21% voter participation rate before 2012, when we did the first election with them. And what they did is they, every morning at nine o'clock in the morning, they had their returning officer commenting on how the voting was going. They had all kinds of information out there to people, they had social media going well, and they had 151% increase in their voter turnout. It was just everything they did seemed to click. They had a mayoralty race, which is always good to have a race for the mayor's position. But they also had a contest between each of the three wards, so that people were incentive and a daily basis, they could say what the participation was in each of the wards. So top of mind to all the people that were in the region, that were in town that were voting. It was on a daily basis that they heard about it, and they had great participation. I'm going to talk in a little more detail about the pandemic issues and what impact that's actually having on some of the election coordinators that we're talking about in a moment. I'll talk a little more in detail about that. The other thing is, there's provincial accessibility requirements in terms of making sure folks can get into all the polling stations. And obviously, that if you're voting from home, anybody who has currently a disability typically has assistive devices at home that help them function on their day-to-day activities at home or at work. And what we find is people who have visual disabilities, or if they're completely blind, they can use the internet. You'd be amazed at some of the folks that I've talked to and I've watched surf the internet. And our system has what are called tags built into the software as well, that allows the system to speak to people about what's on the screen. So that's a very common thing on every website nowadays, has that capability in the software out there that's free to visually disabled voters to be able to actually use that type of technology. And for many of them, the first time ever that they've managed to vote in secret, instead of having to have somebody say, I want you to mark my ballot for this, and hope that they've done exactly as they've asked them, and drop it in the ballot box. And last but not least, it's cost-effective. Typically, a Nova Scotia municipal election costs between $4 and $6, this is a paper-based election. A provincial election is between $7 and $9 per eligible elector, and a federal election is somewhere between $11 and $13 per eligible elector. So electronic voting comes in at about anywhere between 65 and I'd say 75% of the cost of a paper ballot. So if you have mailouts that are going out to the people to tell them where they're going to be voting and things like that, the same thing is required, you'll get a letter in the mail with a pin on it, and you'll require that pin and your date of birth to be able to cast a ballot in the election. It also decreases other costs on the administrative side of it, you don't necessarily need polling locations and things like that. I wanted to speak about the COVID-19 impact once again on it. As you may or may not know, the minister responsible for municipal affairs has sent out a letter to all the municipalities, letting them know that there will be elections in October, and he's getting some pressure to to, you know, continue to support that to a lot of the municipalities that have already gone down the road and been able to actually, you know, start getting ready for their election. But if you're considering paper voting locations, some of the issues that we've seen, and I'll use Kings County, for example, Kings County is going to use electronic voting, but also have paper polling. And they're finding now the biggest issue there is that they can't get election workers. Election workers, polling clerks tend to be folks who are maybe retired and stuff like that. And they are the ones from a COVID-19 point of view, if they do get infected, are certainly more at danger of having problems with it. So less and less of them are willing to commit, they just don't want to take the risk of being able to do it. The costs and the lines are some of the other things. Kings County, once again, is looking at locations where people, if they have to stand in line and they have to get outside, there can only do six or seven people in the foyer of the voting area until the line actually has to start forming outside. And in October, standing in line at any point in time for anything, let alone an election, where typically, we're not used to having to stand in line in Nova Scotia elections, but that may be a very possibility. The other thing is the cost of personal protection equipment, currently, Kings County is factoring in. It looks like something like $17,000 they're going to have to spend on personal protection equipment for staffing up the various different tables and everything that they're going to have to have there. So I think they're going to hit up the federal or the provincial government for money on that because it has to do with the COVID-19, but it's still money that has to be paid to do it. So the possibility does exist for a second wave sometime in the fall of 2020, that's the latest we've received information on that. There's lots of variables that may or may not cause that to happen, but if you're using electronic voting and there is a second wave, or there's something like that, people don't have to go out and vote. They simply, they vote while they're watching the hockey game on TV and in their pajamas, that type of thing is pretty much the norm. I've made over, close to 200 presentations to the city and town councils in Nova Scotia and in Ontario. And one of the, what I've done is put together some of the more common comments we hear. A lot of it, as I mentioned earlier, think that older voters basically don't know how to vote if they use it. If they don't have internet capability or something like that, I can guarantee you, they have a phone in the house. And it takes probably short of about 60 seconds to cast a ballot electronically using the phone. You dial in, it'll ask you for your PIN and your date of birth, and then it'll present you with the various races and press one for Dean Smith, press two for the different candidates as you go down the list from there and confirm it. People will know how I vote. Well, we wouldn't be in business very long if people could actually see how somebody voted. So voter anonymity and secrecy of ballot are key things that make electronic voting something that a lot of people appreciate the fact that they can vote and their guarantee of a secret ballot. How do you know who's voting the PIN? The person who is on the elector list gets mailed a piece of mail. If somebody intercepts your mail and opens it and votes it, they may know your birthday because that's required as well. They actually break five Canadian laws, not the least of which is under the Canada Post Act, which gives a $25,000 fine and up to five years in jail for opening somebody's mail, impersonating them. And you add to that a bunch of the other things. One of the other interesting things is places like Halifax and Cape Breton Regional Municipality have actually added to their bylaw to include additional penalties for people who talk about how they voted. So it's illegal to discuss how you voted for somebody. I mean, people do it, and they put signs on their lawn, so it's pretty obvious. But the notion of taking somebody else's PIN or forcing somebody else to vote a particular way and using the PIN, a lot of people say, well, you know, somebody may force somebody to vote a particular way. If somebody's in the household and I want to, I'll just take their PIN and vote it. So there's nothing about forcing them, just stealing the right to vote, which, as I mentioned, is penalized in the act currently. It's clear that you can't do that. That's not, say, it doesn't get done, like, we don't know that it doesn't get done, but it's certainly not something that the average Nova Scotian is probably going to experience. Voters will try to use it, creating an uninformed vote. Well, sorry, if you're 18 years old, you're Canadian, and you have residency, doesn't matter how smart you are, you get to vote in our municipal election. So if they want to try it, it's not going to generate an uninformed vote, person is going to make a decision on who they're going to vote for, and that may or may not be right in your mind, but they do get the right to do that. If someone didn't get a PIN, well, basically, it's not unusual for somebody not to be on the electors list. There's a whole protocol in place that allows them to get it. They can be given a PIN by the election officials anytime during the election period, up to including Election Day. We talked already about the cost, it's typically a little bit cheaper, and we've also talked about where it's been done before, not only in Nova Scotia, but the rest of Canada. So how does somebody do this? How does somebody cast a ballot on the internet? Basically, everybody's going to get a letter, and the letter should arrive in somebody's mailbox. And this is another interesting thing, since they've gone to the community mailboxes, we used to have letters arrive three days or so before the election, and now what we're doing is we push it back. So it's almost seven days before the election starts, simply because people do not visit their mailbox every day. I used to have mine, used to have mine on my house, and I used to get my mail every day there. Now I have to walk a grand total of 100 feet, so I go once a week, or my wife does, actually, she gets it in the daytime. It doesn't matter where you are in the world, you can vote. We've had military personnel, from the military personnel in Afghanistan voting, we've had Coast Guard personnel 200 miles off the coast voting on board ship. It's really amazing when we start looking at it. In Halifax, I think we had, in the HRM election we did last time, I think we had something like 77 people vote from various different states in the United States during the election period. So we can capture what is called session data, IP addresses and telephone numbers of connections to the system, and we can use that, and it basically allows us to figure out where somebody was when they voted. You're going to get a, when you're letter, you'll see a website you go to. When you land on the website, you'll see the dates and the times that eligible to vote, and you'll simply click the continue button. If you require your election to be conducted in French and English, there'll be a button for each language there on the envelope, on the letter that comes in the mail as well. There'll be an 800 number for English voting and another one for French voting, but I understand Oxford simply does an English election, as do probably 90% of the other municipalities in Nova Scotia. What you'll see then, you'll see some squiggly lines and some little What you'll see then, you'll see some squiggly lines and some letters and things like that. That's called a CAPTCHA challenge and you simply click on click on the box and put the put the letters that letters and numbers you see in there and hit the continue button. And what you're presented with is the login capability. You put in your date of birth and you put in the, in this case, an eight digit PIN number that you were sent in the mail and you hit the continue button. And at this point in time, you're in the system. And what you're presented with is typically a list of the races that you'll be eligible to vote for. In this particular case, the mayor, councillors and the school board election. So obviously, there's no school boards now except CSAP, so you may or may not see a CSAP ballot on on your 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 entry screen. If there is none, then you'll just see the mayor and councillors. So you're presented with a ballot. The instructions are at the top defining how many you can vote for. So in this particular case, you simply click on the box next to the candidate of your choice. It looks like a ballot, an X goes in there and then you get down and you hit the submit button. And what happens is it's submitted to the system. And then the system says, okay, you're about to vote for Johnny McDonald. Is this really who you want to vote for? If you want to confirm it, you say vote now. If you want to go back and change it, you go and hit return to ballot. So it doesn't automatically where you clicked, jump in and allow you to vote on the system. It simply says you're about to vote for Johnny McDonald. I want confirmation. And if you say, yep, that's what I'm going to do, I click on the vote now button. And at this point in time, the system comes back and says your vote has been confirmed. You your ballot is in the virtual ballot box at this point in time. If you wanted to leave the system, you could exit out of it at this system or at this point in time. It knows you voted for the mayor. You could jump in. Somebody says, okay, Dean, it's time. Let's say I voted at work and somebody says, Dean, it's time to go home. If you want a ride, we're leaving now. And I say, okay, I shut down my system and I jump in the car and I pick up my pick up my cellphone. I'll dial the eight hundred number for my Oxford election and I'll enter my PIN and my date of birth. And it knows I voted the mayoralty ballot and it'll then present me with the candidates for councillor. Okay, so it's one of the unique features on our system. You can come in and out of the system using either of the two channels. We do see that a lot of not a lot of people, but I would say probably less than one percent of the people don't vote the whole ballot at the same time. They'll actually go online to other websites and and review the the Facebook page of the of the people running for council and things like that. And they may come in the next day or something like that. As long as you finish your voting or you you go back into the system over the period of time when the voting is available, which usually runs anywhere between seven and thirteen days, then you can just vote whenever you whenever you want to go back. In this particular case, there's a district one councillor, we're going to go in and we're going to select Joseph Howe. Once again, we're going to submit the ballot. It's going to say, once again, you're going to select Joe Howe. We say, yeah, I'm going to select Joe Howe. And it says that's confirmed. In many municipalities in Nova Scotia, there's at large elections and you have you can select up to a certain number of electors or candidates based on the number of candidates running. So in this particular case, we're going to select four candidates because we can select up to four of the following. If I wanted to select less than four, I could do that. And typically, we we talk to the election officials and this is called under voting a ballot. If you want to just pick one or two or three, you can do that on the system. If the clerk or the election official has told us in advance, that's how they want the configuration of the system set up. So that's basically what what the system allow you to do. You cannot overvote the system. If you tried to click another box on the system, the system would come up and say, you're trying to pick more than the maximum allowed. You have to deselect somebody if you want to select somebody else. So what we do then is we say, yep, those are the four I want. If 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 you selected three and you clicked the the cast my vote now button, it would come up and it would say you've only selected three and you're eligible to select four. Is that really what you want to do? And if you said yes to that, it would bring up the screen and say, there would only be three here and say, okay, here are your selections. So once again, I'm going to vote for my selections and those are the four councillors that I've voted for. And last but not least, in this case, let's this may be a CSAP ballot. If you have the French school board election required in your your municipality, then there'll be a question here determining the eligibility of the voter that they'll have to successfully say that they're eligible to get the ballot before they are actually presented with it. Otherwise, if they say no, it'll simply go to the last page. So in this case, we're going to select Jerry Cormier. Once again, we're confirming that that's who we want to vote for. And there's confirmation. When I when I finish voting, the system comes back and it shows me the races that I've successfully voted and what method I used to do it. So if if for some reason I voted the mayor's race using the telephone and then I came into work and I voted the rest of them on the internet, the first one would say phone up here and the other three would say internet. So that's basically how the voting works on on the system. What I wanted to show you briefly now is the other the other stakeholders in an election, which include the election officials themselves, auditors, a voter helpline that the municipality will set up and and of course, candidates and electors. The election officials have the capability to monitor elections as they're going on. So hopefully you can see this, but this is a dashboard that the election official gets during it. And as voting happens, the number of eligible voters, the number participating, the number that are voting manually and that information is always displayed. And the the election official can go at the race level, go just check out the mayor's race. They can't see how somebody's voting. They can see how many people are participating and they can see how many people are using the phone versus, say, the internet to vote. So this is the the crack cocaine that the that the election officials end up watching all day long. Just it it's intriguing to see how it goes. Auditors do something similar. The information that they see generally is exactly the same with the exception that they can cast audit votes during the election by phone and by internet. And what they're doing is they're proving that the system's continually functioning through the entire election process. So they'll they'll cast votes while they're at home at night or they'll go to their office or they can be anywhere. And they use audit pins that the system that they that they request through the system. And they use those pins to determine the to determine that the system is always functionally working. They can also, when the election is over, both the election official and the auditor can hit a reports button. And the results of the election will be displayed on their screen for them to print off as the official results at the end of it. So typically, within five or ten minutes after the election is over, the election results are available to the election officials. This is anything that's done in the system. In this case, this is the auditor module looking at activity that's been performed by them. Everything that's done by anybody with an ID and a password in the system actually generates a log entry for audit purposes as well. One of the most important considerations is how do electors who may be having have questions about it? Maybe they didn't get a letter in the mail or they're for some reason, they they don't understand what's going on with the system and they need some help. Then what happens is they'll call the helpline that's going to be set up within the municipality. And we we train the folks at the municipality on how to answer the calls, how to determine the problem somebody may or may not be having. So in this particular case, you can see a PIN has been completed by Arlie Smith. And this is information about their about their particular activity. You can you can see other people who live at the same address. If you're in question, trying to figure out they they may call in and they're pretending to be somebody. You want to determine for sure who they are. You'd ask some questions about their date of birth and things like that. And if you were, you really wanted to check and see, you know, if they if they were who they were saying they were, you click on the same address button and other people who are living at that same address would come up. And then you could you could say, well, you know, is there somebody else living at home that votes as well? Yeah, my wife Pamela votes there and you could look up. You could say, okay, can you tell me Pamela's date of birth? So Pamela is my wife. I could probably think for a second or two and I probably guess it right. But the things like that are built in and those are things that protocols exist so that when people call in to get action taken on their PIN, the election officials and the voter help people know exactly who they're talking to or have a high assurance of who they're who they're chatting to. You can click on a racist voted button and you can see that these people have cast a ballot already for the mayor and for the councillor. Obviously, you can't see how they voted. Once again, you can never see how they voted. You can see that ballots were cast. The last thing I wanted to to show you is from a candidate point of view. One of the most important things that that the candidates can do under the Municipal Elections Act, the candidates running in an election, by law, the the election officials have to be able to provide them with anything that happened in terms of voting in the advanced voting period. So what there is to legislatively be able to be compliant, we have what's called a candidate module. So candidates in the election will get a module that allows them to see who has or has not participated in the election. So in the paper world, typically, somebody has gone and maybe a campaign worker sits as an official at a polling table and as people come in, they strike off the names on a list that they have of their two hundred best friends to support Dean Smith, who's running for mayor of Oxford. So this module allows candidates, we give them two different IDs that they can connect into the system. So during the course of the election, they can watch and see who has, or more importantly, who has not yet voted in the election period. It's a very important legal requirement for them to be able to have that information. So in a paper world, they were allowed to get it every every day that there was an advance poll. They could go to the clerk's office after the election and look at the list. Or they more importantly, they could have somebody sitting down at the polling stables tracking who has voted and who hasn't yet voted. So we're required to provide something. The interesting thing about this is one of the things that you can do is the candidates can also build a list of their two hundred best friends. So people on my street and I play in the same hockey team with, I'm going to put all their names on a list and I know those people. I they got signs on the lawns. I hope they vote for me because they said they were going to. And now I can just watch and make sure that they're out there casting a ballot. So with with, you know, a couple hours left in the election, if I see a couple of my neighbors who haven't voted yet, I might go over and knock on their door and see if they're home and and eligible, you know, just say, well, if you got a phone in there, maybe you, you know, throw me your support behind me, those types of things. So there's lots of different ways that we've seen candidates use this to their advantage. And it basically allows you to get the vote out. And that's one of the key things that they're that they're looking to do, make sure they can get the vote out. How much does an event cost when you do an electronic voting? This is currently the for electors, less than ten thousand. There's a minimum fee of a dollar twenty five per elector plus a dollar twenty per elector for the letter. So this includes design and setup, production, the printing, the postage and everything. The letter goes out, it's customized, it's got the candidates' names on it, it's got where to vote, it's got the website number. If you're having voter assistance centers set up around around the town that people can go to and use computers that have been set up by by the municipality, the those addresses are there. So basically that, as well as all the all the training is all included in in that. So when you start looking at the cost of a paper based election compared to this, it typically comes in, especially if you have to mail something out. In some cases, some smaller municipalities just put notices in the paper. But in other cases, that type of information is required to be sent out. Here in HRM, for example, they they send out a notice to everybody, explain to them where they go to vote. So that's the gist of my presentation. I'd be happy to, I'd be happy to take any questions that that you might have.
Okay, thank you very much, Dean. That was very informative, especially right now since, you know, if you end up with the second wave of COVID that we don't know, you know, how difficult it will be to get out there and vote. So I appreciate the fact that, you know, we're kind of ahead of the game right now. So one of the questions that I have, and then I'm going to open up the floor. Do you have any percentage of who uses electronic? Let's say, let's say in the town of Trow, who uses what percentage of electronic voting versus paper?
Well, the last two elections they've done has been all electronic. They never they never went for partial partial, another word, a hybrid solution. They never just said, okay. But I can tell you in in the rest of the municipalities here, it it tends to be anywhere between sixty and eighty percent of the people will vote electronically. You know, Halifax, for example, I think it was almost seventy percent of the people decided to vote electronically. One of the things you should be aware of as well, the elections, the if you're doing a paper poll this this election year, the prescribed advanced polling day falls on the Thanksgiving weekend. So a lot of the municipalities are saying, we're never going to get anybody out voting on, you know, like it's bad. It's bad enough, we couldn't, we couldn't get together with with folks at Easter time and things like that. But Thanksgiving is is, you know, kind of be going to be a time when you want to get together with with families. Even with electronic voting that that goes and starts, say, the first week of October going up till the seventeenth, we find that holidays, people don't vote even electronically. They don't vote as as often. So Halifax, for example, was getting on average nine percent of the turnout during the most of the regular days. But on the weekend, the long weekend, because in twenty sixteen, it had the same issue. Thanksgiving fell on the advanced polling paper day, that they only had four percent of the of the vote turnout that day. So people on average, paper voting will probably still be around twenty five percent. When you go electronic, all electronic, those people obviously can vote by paper. The question is, if it's convenient for them, there's more people now that are have been using, you know, things like we're doing now, Zoom and getting together with with people and and communicating and using technology to do it. Then I think you'll probably see if you offer paper voting, I would I would guess probably in the twelve to fifteen percent range of of people that are doing it. So and you'll probably incur the cost associated with the, you know, with the COVID protection that you're going to have on top of it as well. So lots of times, first time municipalities still offer paper. They never do it the second time. We've never seen anybody go back to back when they offer paper and they'll they'll have a couple polling stations and they'll sit for hours and nobody comes in the door. So.
Okay, all right. So councillors, I'm going to open the floor to to Dean and any other questions that you may have for him. See everybody, so I'm assuming anyone have their hand up?
Okay, I've been scrolling and I don't see anybody.
Okay, well, Dean, thank you very much for that great presentation, very informative and certainly gives us a lot to think about with the upcoming election in October.
Well, thanks very much for the opportunity. And like I say, there's there's lots of lots of positive things. There's, I I think probably on a go forward basis, what you're what you're going to see is a lot of the province deciding that they're going to go forward with it. But at the same time, there there are subset of the provinces that want to make sure that everybody who likes the paper voting continues to get out and have that social aspect. But some people, when you set up kiosks and stuff inside your mall areas or inside your town halls as well, the people can still kind of give that social that social aspect of voting and still come in and vote using kiosks and stuff like that. So once again, thanks very much. Appreciate the opportunity to present and best of luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Worship, if I can, I can offer a couple of things. But when I was in Middleton, we we chose to do a hundred percent electronic voting through a telephone and it was highly successful. It was, and Dean, you'll have to go to stop viewing, stop sharing your screen there.
Oh, yeah, you don't want to see my spreadsheet. I'll close that.
And so it was it was very successful and it was was it worked really, really well. There are a couple of things that have been raised through some of the reporting officers and some of the municipal folks around potential second wave of COVID in the fall, long term care facilities and trying to get mobile voting polls in there. There's been issues around maybe campaigning, which is, you know, that's not something that we're we're getting much traction. Maybe campaigning, which is, you know, that's not something that we're we're getting much traction with the the province on, but. Certainly, I've had experience working with an all electronic. Election and it's been well received. Lots of seniors take advantage of it, as has been talked about in the presentation. So. There's there's good experience out there and we are able to tag along on HRM with their kind of their bulk purchase and. Take advantage of a little bit of the lower cost. We've done a quote and I think it's less than thirty five hundred dollars. For IntellVote to do our election and then we'd have some additional costs on that. If we chose to do a mobile or. A public voting kiosk. So we might need to get a tablet of some sort. Might need to get, might need to staff it a little bit. So there would be some. Extra cost if we decide to do that, certainly more extra cost if we went with. A polling day that had paper ballots. So I just throw that out there as information.
Okay, thank you. Okay, councillor Ed Sheeran does have a question.
Yeah, Dean, I was just wondering what kind of glitches you guys have run into doing these like you. You know, in heard of them in the States where they've literally, you know, the whole place crashed and everything like that. I was just wondering if. You guys have experienced any of that kind of stuff.
I think Dean left.
Dean left.
He did.
So much for my question, but maybe he could get back to me about it.
We can, we can follow up with that.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, councillor Ed Sheeran, we'll make sure that we find out the answer to that question and. And, you know, perhaps some of you will have other questions after thinking about this presentation and. Also, the fact that it's been live streamed, you may get questions from our voting public that you would like to bring forward too. And I think it's important to. Have an open ear, but also to have an open mind about. You know, things that, things that are changing and. I think, like I said, we have to be open to that. Just as information on your screen, you're going to see a phone number down at the bottom. That is not someone sneaking in on our meeting. That is actually councillor Cole Burney wasn't able to get in on Zoom. So councillor, if you can just say hello, so the public knows you're out there.
Hello.
There he is. Okay, so so we've got a full host tonight. So some important business that we have to cover tonight. Under four point two, we have the financial variance report for our first quarter. This is a comparison between twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. So. And council, you have had the opportunity to review the comparisons. And I'm not sure, Rachel, if you would, if you wanted to speak to any of this first or just open it up for questions.
No, I I think I just sent out an email last week just noting that where we are with our property tax payments this year as compared to last year. I know there was some concern around people impacted by COVID nineteen, but. We're pretty much at the same place for our revenue this time of year as we were last time, which is. A good indication for our community that we've weathered it well, hopefully, and and let's see where we go. We didn't have, we don't have the approved budget, so we couldn't give you the variance report of what is spent compared to what the budget's approved. So we felt that a comparison year over year would be helpful for you to see where we are.
Okay, so I will open the floor to questions or comments.
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead councillor.
The numbers, there's a couple of numbers here that don't quite understand. The number for the garage is thirty nine hundred and sixty dollars and fifty five cents. Does that mean? That was spent on the garage the month of April? From April to from April to May? Is that what that means?
Just find it here. Garage maintenance, you mean?
Yes.
So that would be that. This year, yes. And I can tell you what that is. We we purchased a used C can to put in as storage back there. Because one of the old sheds is pretty much falling apart where there's a lot of storage. So. We had opportunity to purchase that used at a good price and so we put it in there.
We paid three nine hundred dollars for that container. Is that what you're saying?
No, there there was, I think it was around three thousand, thirty five hundred, but and. They often go over four, but then there was some gravel and some other costs associated with that and the demolish demolition of the other piece.
Demolition of what? I'm sorry.
Of the other building. That was falling down. Yeah, that we replaced it.
Okay, and who did we purchase the container from?
I would have to check that out. I'm not sure. If I can get that for you.
Okay, please. And the electrical bill, if I may, the arena. I noticed it's thirty two hundred and forty five dollars this year compared to last year. But I I guess I don't understand why it's so high when there was nobody even in the arena. Last year it was twenty five eighteen. And this year it's thirty two forty five. You get the arenas been empty. Is there something maybe running in there that shouldn't be or?
We will. Well, we were almost finished for the year. And so I think the, I think. That some of the Nova Scotia power bills came in after March thirty first, and so we had to pay them in the first quarter, I think. So I'll double check on that as well.
Okay, thank you. Thank you councillor. Deputy Mayor Draper.
Yes, Rachel, I just noticed a lot of some of the things, it's difficult to really do a good comparison because. For example, some grants are in, some grants aren't. Is there any way possible that we can? Adjust the recording on that to show that they are. Similar to last, as opposed to, I'll give you an example, probably easier to do. On page two, unconditional transfers. It shows fire acreage grant of twenty seven, twenty eight. But nothing. From last year, same period. But we know we will be getting them at some point in time. And there's a number of those instances throughout the document. So can some assumptions be made in the forecasting, I guess is what I'm saying.
Right, so we're not there yet. And I know that that you'd like to. I know, I think we've talked about and breaking our budget down to twelve months, like twelve separate periods so that we can compare month to month. And we can notice where we are. So we're still catching up a little bit on. Where proper allocation should be in a budget and pining on those things. So absolutely, this isn't a perfect report, but just a little bit of a an idea of where we are.
Yeah, for example, on the MFC principles on the last page, we're showing forty three thousand for. I presume this Main Street phase two.
Yes.
First month last year, but nothing this year. So kind of throws them in.
Right. And so the MFC ones were deferred until June. Or first part of July. So they wouldn't come out this early. It's just different because of COVID. Some things have been deferred and some things haven't.
Understand.
Yeah, for sure. But I I know it's hard to follow those.
Okay. Are there any other questions, comments under four point two? Okay, if not, we are going to move under four point three and this is going to be our. Draft operating budget. This is a discussion. This is where we need to give direction to staff. We. We need to, you know, take a good, strong look at it, give ideas. Rachel to explore directions to staff and. And make some some decisions where we got to go in the future. One thing that I do want to say is. One thing, you know, it certainly is a different year because of the COVID crisis, but. One of the things that we have lost is our revenues from our own sources such as, you know. Any revenues that we'd be making at the arena, any of our. Recreational programming or anything like that. So that's some things that we're losing, but. I think right now this is a discussion and. I'm gonna just let Rachel just say a few words beforehand before I open it up to council to. To start our proceedings here.
Thank you, worship. So as the mayor's noted, this is a very preliminary look at our draft budget. It is brought forward and based on the same tax rate, the same services, the same programming, the same staffing. We haven't had any direction from council on any other. Different levels of that. And so we've brought forward the numbers that we know that we have from the province for. Required payments and we've taken a look at our actuals and budget from last year and tried to do our best estimate to do. What we think we're going to need this year. There's a couple of things. That you should be aware of is that for salaries, we've put it in for the full year right now. We understand that there's been some temporary layoffs and and that there's some vacancies and so. Those might not be the full amounts for this year. But I wanted you to understand that first. And if we choose, as council chooses to go forward to say, you know, we want to tweak that for this year and we want to decrease it. To be able to help us find a balance in our budget. That's fine. We just need to understand that next year, if we fully staff up or if we change that, then we'll have to adjust the budget going forward. So. I didn't want to give you something that was less and that you would just assume that. Oh, that's all we're going to need for staffing on a go forward basis. When we have some temporary layoffs or some vacancies. So there's that. You can say we haven't adjusted the tax rate. We're looking and of course, we have about a ninety nine thousand dollar deficit from last year for a number of reasons and we've talked about that. So. We have to fund that first out of our this year's budget. There are a number of ways to do it. You can find ways within your budget to to fund it. Some people can take it from the reserves to fund it. We don't have a lot in our reserves. It's not something that I would recommend, but that's certainly a discussion we can have. We've got about a two point four six million dollar operating budget. Out of that, we've got a hundred and or five hundred and five thousand for the RCMP, which is required. We've got fifteen thousand for corrections, which is required. We have nineteen thousand for housing, which is required. We have two hundred and twenty four thousand for education, which is required. All those come from the province. We have nineteen thousand for property valuation services. And we're we're currently paying two hundred and twenty two thousand dollars to finance our debt, to service our debt. And all of those servicing charges comes out of our operating budget. So that's two hundred and twenty two thousand. That gives us just over a million dollars, which leaves us one point four six million left to run the town. We're looking at about five hundred thousand for overall staffing wages for all of our organization. So as you can see, we're left with less than a million to consider all of the things that we need. The sewer, the roads, fire, our fleet, paying for councils, streetlights, sidewalks, solid waste, recreation facilities, our IP network and our communications. All of those things with less than a million dollars. When we take away the mandatory costs and our wages. So I just wanted to. Set that stage. I think it's going to be important as we go forward that we look at what core municipal services that we need to do, but I understand that council will probably have some questions. Perhaps have some ideas. It's for the broad discussion to talk about. What kind of service level do we want? What kind of tax rates do we want? What kind of? Services and programming and staffing do we want? And I have some thoughts and some ideas, but I certainly. Like to open that up for council to have discussions or ask questions first and then we can kind of get down into some of the the direction that we might want to go.
Okay, so what I'm going to do is anybody that would like to speak. I would like to like you to raise your hand now and then. I will put you in order and we'll go in that order. And then if anybody has a secondary question, we'll wait till the first people have had the opportunity to speak and then we will. You'll get your second question. So just right now, anybody that would like to speak, please raise your hand. Okay, Deputy Mayor Draper.
Okay, do you want me just to take one item at a time or go through as I see it?
Your choice, yeah.
Okay, well, I think one of the things we can assume that based on what's going on and what's happening. Probably, we I guess we have to zoom, but hope. That the arena will operate this winter, but assume that it will not based on what's going on. So therefore, I think when you take a really hard look at the labor costs, et cetera. Do that based on the fact that we're losing a ton of revenue. By not having it operating. Should it get up and start operating, then of course we'll have revenues to offset the labor that we attach to. And again, it's my hope that we that it does. There's a very good point. There's same story really for the theater and the Saturday night, Friday night jams. Back to there'd be very little revenue to that. So any opportunity we can look at for the theater to reduce costs will be would be very helpful. What sales and materials on page two, the budget's dropped from eighty eight hundred to three thousand. I presume there's a reason for that. That's something that we probably should look at, an opportunity there maybe to increase that revenue.
Last year, that was a sale of a piece of property. Usually we don't have very much. Mostly it's just the the sale of metal out of the landfill. Sorry, Brenton, I'm going to mute you just because some of your background is interfering and we didn't hear what you said, Rick.
I just say that the property actually is shown at a different spot in the that property sale was shown at a different spot. So that's something you might just want to take a look at. County funding for the arena, I assume, is either going to be cut or eliminated possibly based on, I don't know if we've got confirmation from them or not.
No, I I've heard that it might be half of what we applied. We applied for twenty five and let's see what we get.
Same thing on general government for expenses where we're not traveling or doing any particular work. There might be an opportunity there to reduce the budgets based on expenses. I had a question on the salary for the accountant. It's showing thirty two hundred and eighty dollars. That can't be right, can it?
It's not. I missed a zero on that. Sorry.
Okay, thank you. Admin salaries paid by water. Sixty nine thousand five hundred. That's the adjustment from the water utility, I assume.
That's correct. So under our water utility application to the URB. We generally take about thirty percent of salaries from the billing clerk, the accountant, the deputy clerk and myself. And allocate that to water because that's about the amount that we spend doing the water.
Yeah, that makes sense. I just don't see it on last year's budgets. So I'm wondering.
Because it wasn't, it wasn't allocated that way. We we do a year end journal entry, but I think it's better to actually budget it that way.
That's fine. Accounting contracted services, I presume that's for the assistance we get from the local accounting firm. Line in there for Christmas bonuses, I think those have been eliminated, have they not? Did you?
No, so those weren't eliminated.
Okay.
They can be, but they weren't.
Okay, we can talk about that at some point.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
I'm wondering if there's an opportunity to defer the Nova Scotia Community College Foundation. Monies for a year based on the circumstances we're going through.
Certainly up to council to discuss.
So so that's something that we may want to ask the question of Nova Scotia Community College. It just means it goes the next year out. As opposed to happening this year. Sorry, I'm trying to go as fast as I can here. RCMP contract, I think there probably could be some savings there. Is there any way possible to estimate that?
They've said that it could be eighty thousand, but we don't have a a clear number of that. We're just waiting to hear back from Public Service Canada, Public Safety Canada. To find that out. So at this point, they've given us the amount that we are required to pay and they're invoicing us on that. To find that out, so at this point, they've given us the amount that we are required to pay and they're invoicing us on that and we have to budget for that.
Okay. Wondering why under fire, the fire communication system has doubled.
So this year, there's five thousand dollars, we had initially budgeted twelve thousand last year. And so we've added five thousand dollars, they've indicated that they need to wire a base for their T M R radio and that's that's the purpose of that.
That summer student sixty five hundred. Is that number real?
That is based on thirteen weeks, we were hoping to get funding for that, we've not heard anything back. And that's to have our baskets watered and to help out in public works and that's that's the same person that we've had in past.
Yeah, possibility, some savings there, I presume.
Well, we can certainly shorten the the term.
Yep, okay. Fuel costs should be down this year, I would think, so there might be an opportunity there to reduce those some.
May.
Street maintenance twenty five thousand. And I keep asking this question and I guess I'm just. Dense, I'm not sure, is there a possibility that could be included in the paving contract and gas tax revenue used to pay it? Brooks, some of the matching, I mean.
Not really, patching isn't considered capital, it's it's operational unless we're gonna do a larger piece of it, that it's. Where it's a small piece, we do poples and and small amounts, it's not one bigger job. I can, I can relook at maybe some areas if we can tuck it into the capital paving, but for the most part, that's just patchful patching and your pottle patching.
I'm just thinking if we do some fairly major. Patching on Water Street that we might be able to tie it into the actual R F P for tendering services for Horton Street, that's all, so just a thought. Tree under Public Health Environmental Development, environmental. Tree expense trail reserve. Any trail monies, I think probably should come from gas tax revenue, so there might be an opportunity there.
The five thousand is usually for the tree there, it's the tree work that we have.
I think we need to take a long, hard look at our community and economic development tourism budget. For this year. Just about finished. Under Recreation, Culture and Arena, of course, there's the arena labor that we could probably take a look at based on the fact that freedom may or may not be operating this year. And I guess in some ways, some of the expenses as well. Under Fields and Library, I think there's a number of costs there that we probably could eliminate or defer. One of them is the Regional Library Board, we're not paying rent currently and we're not sure when we will be, I noticed they're working on the building now.
The library expense. The library board transfer, that's what's mandated by the province.
Right, right, but six thousand is the expense, right?
Right. So I I don't know what we're gonna need for that satellite to set up in the medical center once they're able to open.
I think we have to take a long, hard look at whether we. Replace the recreational coordinator this year, I know that affects us both from funding from the province, but. Salary as well, because if there's nothing going on and we can't get things done, then it doesn't make sense to have a person, an individual in that position, so. Something to take a look at as well. Under Fiscal Services. All of the ones listed are ones that are due this year.
Yes, those are our payments.
So nothing really has, well, I guess a couple have dropped off the list. The rain of the fire hall and the loader. Okay, so that's down a bit, but it seems like the same amount of money, so.
It's down almost fifty thousand.
Yes, for, well, that's right, I got you. I'm looking at school board transfer. And the school enhancement budget, is that due this year again, I thought we were finished that one.
I'm not really clear on that amount that.
There was a term on it.
We'll double check that.
Hey, I'm done. Thank you, I'm sorry for taking up all the time.
No, that's good.
No, that's good to have your questions and certainly gets us all thinking. Okay, now, anybody else like to speak? Okay, Counselor Clark.
Can't hear you, Dave.
Oh. I thought we had a discussion last spring on the school. Did we not?
We talked about pulling the money into a separate reserve. We didn't talk about whether the payment was ending or not.
Okay, I thought we were here at the end of the term.
I'll, like I say, we'll double check on it.
The only thing I think over and above what Rick's gone through there on expenses, the audit fee. Thousand, I think you should put that down to fifteen or less and have a chat with the auditors about. How they think Ruth Ruth Ann's doing.
Well, they haven't had real any real experience with her yet, and so I'd rather budget for it and not need it. Because I think we're still gonna need a little bit of extra there. I'm hopeful that not as much, but I think we'll need a little bit extra, not like last year.
Okay. Uh, Counselor Ed Sheik, please.
Rachel, how many crossing guards did you allow for for this year?
Just the one.
Just the one, okay. I would agree with everything that Rick and Dave have said, that we're gonna take a look at to try to cut some of this stuff back. The rank, if we could get some kind of clarification where we're gonna go with it this year. With the, you know, with what's going on and everything, would probably make things a little clearer and. I think that for the time being, we direct director and possibly the economic development person, we might want to. Really take a serious look at whether we want to replace them this year or not, or bring them back or whatever, maybe just hold off until next year to see how things look, so.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors have concerns, direction, questions? Yes, Counselor.
Just, I could think from a, from a. Balancing of the budget perspective, in my opinion, we should be looking at. Minimal if any increase in taxes this year, so that's something to keep in mind as you try to balance the numbers. And when we come back for the second look at this, would be nice to. Have staff recommend where we go with the actual tax rate in order to balance our budget. So that we feel what we have to do.
So for information, a cent increase on a combined cent, so a cent between residential and commercial. One cent raises seven thousand two hundred and seventy three dollars, so it's not a big. Generator for revenue, so just put that out there. And we will do a bit more of an analysis to give you what those. Those numbers look like. Did any other counselors want to have any comments or suggestions, because I I do have some thoughts that I can put out there so that we can. Perhaps generate a little bit clearer direction for for staff, I don't want to go down a road that you're not willing to go down kind of thing.
Okay.
So I I hear you on some of the operations and some of our facilities and some of our staffing and those two have been in my mind. And I think it's going to be very important to look at our core municipal services that are mandatory. Unfortunately, in communities, that usually leaves recreation and economic and community development outside of those mandated. Services, so those are things that we can look at. I think if we're going to reduce service levels, we want to take a look at the least negative impact on the largest number of residents, so that's kind of been my mindset and I. Thinking councils on the same page, but I just put it out there. There's a few things that we could look at, we've talked about facilities in the arena, so when we take out. The amount of revenue that we would get in the arena and the cost to operate it with. Most the utilities and wages, when we when we balance that out, we're left with about seventy five thousand to a hundred thousand dollars. Straight cost to the town to operate that arena. So without the operations that in itself would give us seventy five to a hundred thousand dollars. And it would impact some service levels for sure, but Spring Hill is close by within the arena and there's there are different options, we're not sure what COVID is going to look like to be able to. Get groups together. And for economic and develop economic development, the Amherst Chamber of Commerce, Cumberland Business Connector, and there's a lot of other resources out there that can assist and help our businesses if you don't have. A strong economic development program. We could look at a four day work week and have a twenty percent. Reduction in salaries, so when we're looking at just over five hundred thousand dollars for staffing and we do a twenty percent reduction. A hundred thousand dollars there, so yes, it impacts service, it's. We can't do five days of work in four days, and so there are there are those options that we can look at. We are, we are in a in a significantly critical point. We don't have reserves of any substantial amount. This budget isn't saying, look, we've got an extra hundred and a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we're gonna put back into our reserves and start building, because that is a policy that we have and that is something that we should be doing. And we're not in that ability, we're not in that place to be able to do it. And so I think it's going to be really important to. Or counselors to think about some of those service impacts and what that might mean. I can look into the various ones that I've talked about, we can look at a reduced work week. We can look at the cost of the arena, we can look at the reduction of staffing and what that means with in recreation and economic development. The budget that I did put forward tonight. We did have that conversation around council remuneration. And we did have the conversation about setting it at the lowest rate of any council in Nova Scotia. And so that's what I've put it at and it does raise it by about ten thousand dollars overall. So I just want to put that out there and I think, I think it's a reasonable approach, I don't think that we can undervalue, but I don't want. People to be surprised by it, so I think council needs to understand that we've looked at the town of Mulberry, that's the lowest paid, next lowest paid council. And increasing overall the council wage package would be about ten thousand dollars to put it to that level. You can choose when to do that, it might not be until after the new council comes in, so it would only be, you know, half a year. And so you're voting for a raise for the new council to come in and not yourselves, that's that's an option. Or it could be that you voted in to start in next April. And so there's a few options there. Just want to make sure that I'm not missing a couple of comments. No, I think, I think that's, those are the comments that I wanted to make, and certainly if anybody has any questions on that, I'd try to answer them.
Yes, Counselor Ed Sheik.
I guess you guys have all heard me over the last sixteen years talk about council remuneration, everything, but I would. Tend to agree, Rachel, that we look at adopting this, but make it for next, next year. And not do it for this year's budget just because of the fact that we are cutting and cutting and cutting and then. We take, you know, we end up taking more, which I I really don't think that ten thousand dollars split up amongst seven people. Is going to drastically change our lives that much, especially when the government's gonna take fifty percent of it anyways, but that's just my opinion on it, so everyone knows it anyway, so.
Yes, we may have heard it a few times. Okay. Any other comments, I've got the sun shining in on me and I look kind of like a ghost, but. All right.
So I'll work on those options that we that I discussed as counsel. Good with all of those, if you have any other ideas, certainly. Give me a shout, but I don't think we're going to achieve what we need to by going line by line, we can certainly find. And and will continue to tweak, but if we're trying to shave off two thousand here and thirty five hundred there and a thousand there. And to come up with a hundred and twenty six thousand dollars to balance our budget, we're not going to do that, because it's already pretty stingy.
Yes, Counselor. Oh, yeah, sorry, Counselor Colburn, you haven't had the opportunity, go ahead.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Hello, oh, I'm sorry, sometimes you can, sometimes you can't, no, I. I agree with Counselor Ed Sheik what he said about, as far as I was even thinking about talking about a raise for counselors at this time when we're cutting everything to the bare bones, I do not agree with it, I think we should wait. And deal with that next year on our next year's budget. That's just my thought, I I just, I just think that. It's absolutely ridiculous to even think about talking about a raise for counselors when they're telling everybody else, we gotta cut service. We may go back with a four day work week, it just, to me, it does not make sense at all, okay, I'll be quiet now.
Uh, Deputy Mayor.
One of the things we might, there's possibility of. Of developing those properties behind the. Housing that we currently own is possible that we, because I know any monies that are gained from the properties would go into. Extra funds for us, in my corrective, is that the case? And I think there's eight lots in there, if I'm not mistaken. So really to do some analysis on what it would cost to. Put water and sewage in there and then put them up for sale and see if there's an opportunity, it not only would bring some money to the town. Put in reserve, but also would bring some tax base if I decide to buy them and build up. Something to think about.
Okay, thank you. Rachel, could you mute, yes, thank you. Counselor Ed Sheik, you had your hand up?
I'm back to the staffing, how many hours a week do they work now, Rachel?
So public works does a forty hour work week and the administration does. Pretty far.
Okay, okay, so that's what I was, I I thought that they did forty and it's like a lot of government offices are only doing thirty five hours a week, so. Have you discussed cutting back, do four day work week with the staff?
No, you know, it certainly impacts capacity, so things would not get done as much. We'd have to really look at key priorities, for sure.
I I I think that that would be a last resort, in my opinion, to cut people back.
So I think so too, but it's up to me to bring you the options.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Okay, thank you, that was a great discussion on that, folks, I think that does give our staff some direction and. Look forward to our next meeting to see, you know, what we're gonna talk about. The next. The next thing that we do have on our agenda is correspondence, we did receive some correspondence from. Elizabeth Smith Cross and just saying that she was a critic for municipal affairs that has now been moved over to Mr. David C, he's M L A for. Doral Bible Hill, the world center, so. I think there's questions or anything. Supporting her. We, there is nothing else, I do need a motion for adjournment. Okay, moved by Counselor Clark, seconded by. Counselor Ed Sheik, all in favor? Meeting adjourned. Okay, good night, everybody. Okay, good night, everybody.
Everybody.